I now call the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. Everybody is here, so we have a quorum. And we are going to first move into executive session under O R S 192 dot 6602 H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. We should be back at seven o'clock for the open session for anybody who is in the audience or waiting online. Thank you. I now call the board back to open session, and our next agenda item is the agenda review. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Debbie, would you be able to take the vote?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Our big item tonight is the Bond Advisory Committee Draft Recommendation. Thanks for all of you who are in the audience. I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
Great. And we're going to have Winnebago Group come up and our two Bond Advisory Committee members as well. Celeste Towns shall be invited up here as well.
So, thank you, Board, for having this on the agenda tonight. I believe I had said in a presentation last August, this past August, that January would be the time where we'd bring a draft proposal to you. Winnebago Group will walk you through that. Before we get into that, I just want to make sure that in a public setting, I give my deepest gratitude to our three board members who've been observers. And not just observers, but also active participants, not committee members, but active participants in the process. And so Owen Von Flu, Janet Allen Akin, Jennifer Traeger, I've sat with Jennifer each one of the four meetings, and it's truly been a pleasure to work with this group. As you know, we spent a long time putting together really thoughtfully this list of committee members that we felt truly represented Silverton and the Silver Falls community. And what I've appreciated most is the really spirited conversations that have gone on, and certainly this last meeting fit the bill. I also want to shout out to Lauren Stanley and our support group, Brett Davison, Steve Nielsen, Debbie Valoff. All have just been tremendous behind the scenes to prepare for each meeting. For a two-hour meeting, we're talking about a lot of hours of prep, 15, 20 hours of prep that go into each meeting, and really being thoughtful about all of the questions that are asked during the process, making sure that for each and every question, we have thorough answers as well. And as you know, the goal of all of this, of course, in the long run, is to hopefully find a way to reconcile the desperate needs of our facilities. But remember, the goal that I have is for the board to take confident action on this bond recommendation this spring. And so I'll talk about next steps as we get there. Having said that, I wanted to also thank Cassie Hibbert and Dale Keikendahl for their support during the process. Cassie has been our lead facilitator, has been doing a tremendous job, and Dale's been right there with her the whole way. It's just been an absolute pleasure to work with Winnebago. They're a top-notch outfit, and they specialize in districts like Silver Falls. So having said that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Cassie. Welcome. And at the end, we're going to have, at the end of the presentation, we'll have our Bond Advisory Committee members, Dixon Bledsoe, Hillary Dumitrescu, and Celeste Richardson is probably on her way. Take it away.
Okay. All right. I'm not used to the screen in the sky here since we've had the room set up differently. So I may peek over Scott's shoulder a little bit. Okay, well, so first off, so pleased to be back in front of you tonight. And as we promised, this is where we were scheduled to be for January, and we are back here to report to you on draft recommendation. So what we're going to do tonight is, first, we're going to walk through the process and the timeline of the work that we did over the past few months, looking at what we did on each one of our BAC meetings. And Winnebago will update on that. And then actually, as part of the presentation, we're going to turn it over to our Bond Advisory Committee members to present the recommendation because it is their recommendation. It is not Winnebago Group's recommendation. It was developed by your Bond Advisory Committee. And I know that they're very pleased to be here tonight. Their hands shot up right away when we said, can we get some volunteers for next Monday? So to take a look at where we are on our overall process, so this all started back in August when we came and we saw you in work session, and then in September in your regular board session. And we looked at the same graphic and kind of talked about how we were going to map this out. And back then, we also did a state-of-the-district poll where we kind of got the lay of the land as well. We also did some more polling later on in this process. And after we finish up our presentation tonight, Jeremy Wright from Wright Public Affairs is going to join us to talk you through the more recent poll that we did to help inform our back decisions. So we saw the back in October, November, December, and January, and now we're back to see you tonight. And then when we finish up tonight, we'll go back and look at this slide again, and probably I'll turn it over to Scott to talk about next steps. So this slide just shows all the people that went into the BAC, of course. At the top is the constituency of the Silver Falls School District and you as the Board of Directors. Bond Advisory Committee is in the middle with 21 members. And then Winnebago and Wright Public Affairs as supporting, as well as our school board observers, who Scott already recognized, and then our district support staff, who are subject matter experts on what's going on in the district. On the right side of this, you can see the attendance. We had pretty good attendance from that group. Just unfortunately, there were a few people that had out-of-town conflicts, but they were right back for the next meeting, so I feel like we had really good continuity through the process. And also, another good time to shout out one of our other supporters, who's Debbie, who you all know how awesome she is, taking notes in all of the meetings and then also getting that out to all of our BAC members so they had reference material to refer back to, or if they missed a meeting, they could fill themselves in. So for BAC number one in October, this was sort of a get-to-know-you meeting. We were building on the results of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. And so this was basically getting this new group together, getting them set on their mission, kind of crash course in the district and just hitting the ground running. So in that meeting, we established ground rules for the committee. We adopted the charge that the board approved for the committee. We reviewed the process, that same timeline graphic that we just showed to you. And then we did a couple exercises to talk about the BAC members' initial impression of the facilities. We also talked through the polling that had been done early on, as well as getting up to speed on all your long-range committee planning work to date, right? We didn't want to reinvent the wheel. There'd been a lot of work there, but we needed to get people up to speed on it and basically ready to roll. Okay, from here, I'll turn it over to Dale to talk about BAC number two.
All right. It was kind of an informational download evening. So several folks prepared information, brought it to the BAC to bring everybody up to a common level of understanding of the conditions of the district. So bond history, going back to your previous attempts and even the earlier passages that helped build this building. Went through that. Went through the operational budget for maintenance. Steve presented statistics about how much actually goes into the buildings every year. Part of that was to help people understand that a maintenance budget cannot build new buildings of any kind, really. That's what bonds are necessary for. The middle school condition challenges, this was an interesting segment, and Brett was deeply involved in it. They prepared a video walkthrough of kind of a typical day at the school. And I don't know if you've had a chance to see that. It was on YouTube in a select distribution at this point. But that told a good story to the bond, the BAC committee. We looked through a replacement design concept and how it was phased. The next slide will give you a quick preview of what that looks like. Looked through kind of overall district needs, some project lists that were developed through the facility assessment that was done not too long ago, and kind of showing, you know, what that list looks like and what the needs were at the other schools. Got a lesson in how general obligation bonds work. Had a call-in from Lauren Sanders with Piper Sandler, and she walked us through all the bonds and statistics and provided some numbers on some potential bond amounts that the community could consider. This was kind of the fun part. We showed some slides showing a potential layout of a new middle school at the same site. Excuse me. This is what we call the replacement concept, and it basically positions the new construction at the north end of the site to minimize impact to the students and school operations to allow the construction and operations to continue at the same time. It takes about four phases to accomplish, but it's a, you know, safe and effective way to get a project done. And that was kind of BAC number two.
Thanks for letting me steal your iPad. Okay, so then moving into BAC number three in December, now we started to get into the options. We'd been doing a lot of conveying information up to that date. This was when we turned it around and really started to have our committee members talk. So we went through a couple different exercises with them. One of our first questions was, should a bond be focused on one project, or should the money be spread throughout all of the district schools? And that was really the first thing that the committee came back unanimously and said, we want to spread the money across all of the district schools. And so that was a very, I think, powerful first decision that started to frame how we talked about it afterward. We did a preliminary vote on the middle school replacement. We had about 90% of the committee raise their hand and say they were in favor of replacement, with a few members that were still had some questions. And one of the questions that got brought up was, would it be possible to save money by doing a remodel of some of your district buildings rather than just an outright replacement? And so we recognized that that is a very good question, and so we set aside some time between BAC number three and number four to explore that in a little bit more detail. And one thing I do want to just clarify about that question, I'm going to go back to the previous slide, is the district in this replacement scenario is already being frugal by keeping your main gym and your locker rooms. You're doing that because you have to, because you did a seismic upgrade on them a few years ago, and part of that is you say to the state, we're going to keep these in their use for 10 years. So you're already keeping some of your existing building. That question was just, could we keep more of your existing building? So we'll talk about that in a second, but we did explore that as a good question that I think is based upon the desire to be frugal in this district and be very careful with money, so we wanted to honor that request. Also, as part of BAC number three, we had a discussion of if we should include any potential projects at the high school in the bond recommendation. Even though we still call the high school the new high school, it is 20 years old at this point, some of it even older than that in the first phase. And when you get to a building that age, there are some things that need to get done on it. So in particular, we looked at a roof replacement, HVAC controls replacement, and a chiller replacement. All three projects have been designated as critical by maintenance staff that if they did fail, would significantly affect the operations of the building. So we considered that as a committee and had some pretty robust debate over that one as well. And then finally, in BAC number three, the committee worked together to create a definition of what we called warm, safe, and dry. And that was basically a baseline for all of your schools across the district on very critical building infrastructure to keep your buildings viable and operational from a long-term standpoint. And what the committee did is they went through an exercise on potential projects and then rated them in order of priority. Following BAC number three, what Winnebago did over the Christmas break in conjunction with our architectural partner was to basically go through and then put pricing and details to the priorities that were created in BAC number three. So to go to the next slide, we'll kind of show you what this looked like. So this got developed between BAC number three and BAC number four, and then presented to the committee in BAC number four for part of their decision-making. And so I mentioned that the committee worked to take individual projects and sort them based on priority. So what you see in this slide is there's pink projects. Those were rated as very, very highest priority. In fact, all of our committee member tables ranked those as very highest. The green was just a little less highest than the pink. Then the yellow was down to a middle priority, and the orange was the lower priority. And I don't want to imply by saying lower priority that they're not important. We were just doing an exercise where we had a force ranking to basically have some sort of sort there. And then you can see over on the right-hand side, and we'll talk about this more when we have W P A present the polling results, but we also did polling between BAC number three and number four to help the committee be informed on community feedback as they developed their draft recommendation. And so those tiers on the warm, safe, and dry, along with the cost of the middle school, which we saw in the other slide, the middle school at $75 million, basically created three different tiers of potential prices. So the first tier would be $26 million of warm, safe, and dry projects, plus a $75 million high school for 101 total. And so we polled on that one. And then the second tier of polling would be both the pink projects and the green projects, plus the middle school. And then the third tier of polling was basically all of them. And those were created basically to give us some different prices so that we could then go out and test some price sensitivity with the community, and then be able to bring that back to the BAC to inform their decision-making. Okay, so then BAC number four was last Thursday night, and this is where we kind of wrapped all those disparate elements together. So what the committee did in this meeting was they reviewed the pros and cons of the replacement, sorry, the middle school replacement versus the modernization, which I mentioned. And I've got some notes on the slide about kind of how that shook out. The replacement, which is the slides that we showed you earlier, where you build the new school on the north and then demo the school, the old school on the south, that is about a $75 million project. And it's also four phases, which seems like a lot, but when you build a new school on an existing site, you've got to have an empty chair, so you always have somewhere to put your students. And that was about a 28-month schedule. The modernization scenario that we explored, which was keeping your gym, as I mentioned, and then keeping your east and your west wing of the sixties buildings at the middle school, and still demoing the 1938 building, which is partially condemned, that saved you a little money, 68 million, but increased your schedule to 40 months because you, again, need to have an empty chair to be able to move those students around, and it turned it into six phases. And I'll let our committee members speak to that in a little bit more detail, but the reasons why the committee thought, yeah, we're not sure if that's kind of worth the money, was the longer schedule, the additional phasing, and the disruption to the education, that it didn't honor the long-range committee's work that had developed the replacement scenario to begin with. And then big ones were that it missed opportunities to design the space to actually optimize the building footprint, and that it retained the inefficiencies that you've already got on that campus.
One of the other compelling points, I think Celeste brought this up, was that if we went with a modernization, it took 40 months, that we would have middle schoolers that would never know anything but construction during their middle school experience. So that was just, that was a compelling point that one of the BAC members brought up.
That's okay. So then also in BAC number four, we reviewed the polling, which you'll get a preview of again later. And then we also re-looked at our warm, safe, and dry priorities, and then we reordered them based upon some of that community feedback. And then at the end of the meeting, we settled on a draft recommendation, which I'm going to turn it over to our BAC members to describe.
One of the things that I was going to bring up, too, and we talked real briefly about it, is the warm, safe, and dry is a great model, but I always wanted to add one other component to it, and that is conducive to learning. And that was one of the things that was raised as a missed opportunity, that, you know, having functional adjacencies and having something that is conducive to kids' learning, certainly being warm, safe, and dry is one of that, but also having the facility be conducive to learning is good. And one of the other components we talked about, too, is during that 40 months, if you go to an elongated schedule, you also run the severe cost, and we, I think we touched on it real briefly, on it's going to change, the numbers are going to change over 40 months. Instead of, you know, 75 to do the middle school, it may grow quite a bit, and that takes some of the construction out of, or some of the benefits out of the equation because you have to cover the cost of inflation. But we really thought it was paramount. You know, it sounds selfish a little bit, but you know, that whole what's in it for me model, you can't go, in our opinion, and I think pretty much everybody agreed, you can't go out and say, let's just replace the middle school, because that's not going to draw a whole lot of votes from the entire district. And we talked a little bit about some of the pitfalls of, if you really make a beautiful brand-new super school, it also, you know, there might be some transfers to that, there might be some people that might want to argue about, oh, you know, getting into that whole concept of closing rural schools because you have a super school in town. We wanted everybody to get a piece of the pie. We did have some heated discussions on whether or not to include the high school. And I don't think you can say everybody gets a piece of the pie if you exclude the high school, where every kid in the district, one commonality is they're all going to go to the high school. So we thought that was really important. So Hillary, you want to, I could talk all night about this.
Yeah, just to dovetail off what Dixon said, I think that, you know, one of the elephants in the room or the main misconceptions between rural folks and city folks, for me at least, was this idea that, you know, well, there aren't that many kids at those little rural schools. And the real number is that a third of our kids attend rural schools. A third of our kids are in city elementaries, and a third of our kids are at the high school at any given time. So we really do have an equal split amongst all of our school sites. So it makes sense, then, that it's not the school buildings that are getting the benefits, it's the kids. All of our kids deserve to go to a warm, safe, dry school building. And as you all know, because I know you've all toured the schools, every school in our district is in need of repairs. Some of them really severe, but all of them necessary, and all of them will greatly improve the morale of our kids, the morale of our teachers, our staff, everyone included. So whereas I started off sort of curmudgeonly in this process, I have become a big cheerleader to it, especially when you crunch the numbers. So the numbers we decided to go with was, you know, we decided we're going to go whole hog here. If we're going to do it, let's do it. And I use the analogy of, you know, there are some folks who love old cars, and I've got my grandpa's, you know, old '57 Chevy, and I'm going to take care of it and put money into it every year and maintain it, and that is an admirable endeavor. It doesn't work really well with school buildings unless you're willing to tinker year after year after year to try, I'm losing my, I'm losing my train of thought, I'm going the wrong way. What I want to say is, there are other people like me who would just as soon buy a new car every 10 years and know exactly what I'm going to pay for, do the maintenance, I'm going to, you know, take it in for all of its updates. And we're really looking at the future of how we do things in our district and saying, you know, we don't want to do any more deferred maintenance. We don't want to have a competitive nature of our schools, you know, pitting little, having fights about who gets what. We want to take care of all of our buildings. So this package will get us off on the right foot of getting every school to a basic baseline of warm, safe, and dry. And then going forward, we want to get rid of that mindset of, you know, competitiveness between the schools, and we want to just make sure that we're doing that maintenance that we need every year going forward. What else do I need to say? Next?
I got a couple of things in mind.
Okay, go ahead.
We talked about a variety of things, and you can see on the right side there, the updated warm, safe, and dry priority list. And like, it's a no-brainer, you've got basement and the flooding, I think, at Evergreen. But another message that I thought, and we thought, is important to get out there, is that for years and years, the district has been beat up about deferred maintenance. Scott and I talked a little bit about that not long ago. And you put it off, and you put it off, and then you get into such deep kimschi that you have to then go out and ask for gigantic bonds. Well, part of the thought about adding the high school to the equation is, first of all, the first part was built in 1998. That's 25 years ago. And as Owen knows as a builder, I know in real estate, is you have things that you have to address, and, you know, a water heater lasts eight to 12 years. And that's in every inspection report I've ever seen. And when you have a 17-year-old water heater, you know that at some point, any second, you're not going to have water. So for the people who say, oh, they're just in trouble again because they've deferred, 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 one of the reasons for putting the high school in there is that you're supposed to have stuff at a 25-year-old building that you've got to pay attention to. So maybe this is a good time to start turning the message around, that we're not going to get into this deferred maintenance trap for years and years and then go out for great big bonds and sometimes get them hammered. It's an opportunity to say, this is where we start, not deferring. We have a roof issue, we have some HVAC things, I think there's a little bit of plumbing and electrical things. But the other thing that I think is absolutely crucial, and Hillary said it better than I have heard anybody say it, it doesn't matter, my kids are in town, my grandkids are in town, your kids are at Evergreen, or Bethany, or Butte Creek, or Victor Point, or Scottsmills, or whatever the rural school is. And the reality is, there are kids. The reality is, is if I live in town, I want your kid at Proudham to succeed. If you're in Proudham, you want my kid to succeed, because they're all going to end up at the same high school, on the same chess team, the same basketball team. They're all going to be going to the high school. And Hillary's message was real simple, there are kids. And, you know, we can argue all the time about people still holding anger issues about unification, and people holding anger issues about, oh, you didn't tell us the truth on the bond in 1998, we thought we were going to complete the new high school. The reality is, this is 2023. They're all our kids, they're all going to end up at the high school, and we want every one of them to succeed.
Dixon, I'd interrupt. Would you, you told me the other day, and I'd like to tell everybody, your thoughts on the word "new" in high school.
Yes, I have a definite opinion, although you know me as very shy. There are people that still say, well, there was heated discussion about not including the high school, because there's, there are some people on the committee, and they represent parts of the community, that think that the bond will lose if we add anything to the high school, because there's still people mad about unification, there's still people mad about the bond being two bonds to complete this new high school, and they're still calling it the new high school. bonds to complete this new high school. And they're still calling it the new high school. And I think in any of our messaging, we've gotta get away from that word. It's not the new high school, it's a 25-year-old high school in parts of it, and what, perhaps 20 years in the other part of it. But our recommendations in this particular bond for 138 is, you don't pass bonds easily, and everybody here knows that. It's really hard in this district. We still have a lot of spit and fire and issues going on between the different groups in the committee, or in the community. But this is an opportunity to get it right one time, and yes, it's a big-ticket item, but let's stop calling it the new high school, and we're not going to include that, because our presentation and our agreement is that everybody gets something, because everybody needs something. So, yeah, new high school, let's get that out of our vernacular, it doesn't fit.
Wanna tackle benefits of our recommendation?
I think we've covered some of these, but what the, the group sort of, they asked us to brainstorm what the benefits were. Obviously, every school, every student at every school is going to benefit. It's worth doing it well. It's, you know, yes, we could go for a lesser amount, but what we saw from the polling was that the amount didn't really change people's votes. If it was 101 million versus 138 million, it wasn't like we suddenly saw people go, oh, 101 million, well, that's no problem. The folks who are gonna be sort of anti-tax are going to be hard to sway, but I am determined. We're gonna do it right once. We are asking a, a big ask here, but I think, again, a big ask shows a big commitment. It improves the safety in our district. If you look at that list, we aren't asking for Kachinu teachers' lounges, or, you know, ergonomically-designed student desks, we're asking for things like plumbing, and windows, and, you know, security systems. They're all things that are going to support our goals minimally. It shows that we're taking care of our kids, that we support the future of this district. My kids are both at the tail end of high school, they're not gonna see any of these benefits, I'm totally okay with that. Somebody has paid for my kids their whole school career. The, the previous generation did that, I'm absolutely willing to pay it forward. We're protecting our investment, that's definitely something Dixon mentioned, a water heater. I had my first experience this year with knowing that water heaters have a life, and that it ends. I did not know that. So I'm still a new, relatively new homeowner, and learning those sort of things the hard way. So I'm, you know, we are, as a committee, we're listening to our district maintenance folks. They're the ones who are down in the trenches of these buildings every day. So we didn't make these lists up, this is what came forward from the experts. We hope this project will unify the district. Unification still is a thorn in the side of some folks, but again, I think it's just, it's just something that we have to welcome people to the table, and keep having the same conversation over and over. Do you wanna take the other half?
Sure, the right side?
The right side.
A little bit about what I had mentioned earlier, we're not continuing to defer maintenance. Scott and I had an interesting discussion, that the district, there's no way you can ever keep up with maintenance from the general fund that you have. But the perception is, in messaging, going out and being able to say, this is where we turn the corner on putting everything off, because we're gonna start taking care of our biggest investment, which is the high school. We're gonna start taking care of things now. The other thing is, improving teacher retention, especially at the middle school, it's, it's pretty gross. In real estate, I've had people back out, and I mentioned this in the meeting the other night, I've had people back out of buying a $500,000 house, because they saw black mold. And even though, I'd say I have a mold company that can come in and probably mitigate it for a thousand bucks, they walk away, because black mold is scary. So somebody on the committee had suggested getting people in to tour it, and even maybe having some of the kids show them. And then they'll see that, you know, there's issues with asbestos, there's issues with, you can't see it, of course, but probably rayed on as well, but black mold, it terrifies a lot of people. So walking through that old school, which was old when I went there, and that was a couple of years ago, I think Eisenhower was just finishing up. But being able to keep teachers at a time where it's absolutely crucial to keep teachers and staff, it also shows our commitment to kids, it shows a pride in the district. Nobody has a lot of pride when you walk into the middle school, and you walk past the part that's condemned, you can't go in there, because it's really bad. And it reflects, as a district and a town, and the area, it reflects our care for the kids that we have. It also improves recruitment opportunities for the district. That's really important, because it's a tough time to get good people. And having a good facility is certainly part of that. So.
We got one more. So after the committee brainstormed benefits, they also brainstormed barriers, and then potential strategies for addressing those barriers.
So, yeah, this is a big ask, and it's going to take some convincing. And as a former teacher, I know that you can teach the same lesson a million times, but until the person that you are trying to teach is ready for that lesson, they're not going to hear it. So I think it's, it's our responsibility, as a community of supporters, to try to have those conversations, to have those one-on-one conversations, as well as any conversations we can have in any of our, our groups, our churches, to sort of take that $138 million cost, and break it down into what it really is, which, when we look at the actual cost per household, we used, I think the number, the figure we used was 300,000 of assessed value. That works out to $38 a month in taxes. $38 a month for what could be $50,000 worth of improvements for one student at, at one school. When we crunch the numbers, this is what I like to call cheap money. You know, you're, you're not going to find a better return on investment than what we're talking about here, because I believe we are practicing really responsible stewardship with this money. It's not going to fluff projects, it's not going to risky projects, it's going to maintenance projects, things that should have probably been done a long time ago, that we're catching up with. So breaking those, those numbers down, and, and we, we talked a lot about making sure that we have graphics that can go on social media, one-page handouts, so when somebody says, well, why don't we try to save those buildings at the middle school? Great question. Here's, here's how we crunch those numbers. We shouldn't be guessing about the questions that are coming in, we shouldn't be surprised, we should be ready for them. There is something called an OSCIM grant, spelled O-S-C-I-M, which basically is a reward from the state of Oregon, that if you get your grant passed, or your bond passed, they will give you a grant of...
Four million.
Four million. So there's this great carrot, that's only right now. So we, we definitely want to talk that up in the community, that, you know, we don't wanna kick this can down the road, because right now, there's this awesome opportunity. I talked about stewardship, I really like that word, that was, Sarah White brought that term up, because I think all of us, rural, city, conservative, liberal, I think we all want to be good stewards of the community's investments, and their money, and their time, and their children. So to me, this is good stewardship. Educating the community on the history of the district's bond decisions. Debbie did something great for us at our last meeting, and provided us with some of the old material of the last bond that passed, was it that one? And then maybe one that didn't pass, so that we could see the difference in the language. And this was pre-social media and everything, and we have so many more tools at our disposal now. But I think that reminding people why we, why we pass bonds. There, so again, there's a big education piece here, but we have wonderful information available to us. Let's see, besides it, we're starting new patterns, a new thinking, yes, we've talked about this already, and that we are a community that takes care of our buildings. It is a bummer to come into a city as fabulous as Silverton, and then go to the middle school and see it crumbling. My kids went to Community Roots, as did Jen's, when we were still housed at the middle school. And it was a little disconcerting when we were, you know, sort of touring the facility and going, okay, so you can't go in that section, because the roof could fall on you. And you definitely don't wanna go over there, because there's so much black mold in that section. So, you know, there's sort of this, this rotten tooth at the center of, of that facility, that really can't be ignored. And it's so out of sync with the rest of our community. Any, any rotting building material is out of sync with, with our community and our kids. Okay, I'm gonna do one more, and you take the rest. And, oh, recognizing that the projects aren't gonna get any cheaper. We realize there could not be a worse time in the history of the world for asking people for money, except like, maybe next year, or the year after. You know, the economy stinks right now for most of us. And these things need to be done. So I'm gonna leave it there, and you can take the rest.
I'm gonna, I have to, I just, I can't pass up the opportunity to say this. The recognizing that the projects won't get cheaper. Most of you were here, you know, when the high school bond was up. And a prominent member of the community, I won't name the names, for like, jerky or really good steak, I might, but the, the gentleman and I went around and around over a period of years, and he said, Dixon, if they would just complete the new high school, none of all these other projects in all the other schools, if they would just complete the high school, we would pass it. That was when it, and I might have the numbers wrong, but that was when it was 17 million. And then it got hammered, the bond got hammered. And the next time, this gentleman said, same thing, if they would just listen to us, just complete the new high school, it's 33 million, just complete the, not all these other projects with all the other schools. And so when it finally passed, and if I remember correctly, it might have been $49 million, it was only to complete the new high school. And he said, Steve, I told you, if you'd just listened to what we said before, just complete the new high school. And I said, what about all the other projects in all the other schools? I think it's important a message about, it just gets more expensive all the time. But one thing, we started on the right side of the ledger here, barriers, the, obviously, the 138 million dollar cost. Somebody's gonna recollect that, hey, we did the high school for 49 million. Yeah, that was years ago. This is a new day and age, this is 2023. As Hillary mentioned, the current economic condition is, is terrible. You know, the economy is struggling, there's all sorts of issues. The tax burden and the anti-tax mindset, that's prevalent. It doesn't go up a whole lot, but to some people, anything that increases is gonna be bad. And what we had talked about earlier, it bails out the past choices of deferred maintenance. So in concluding the strategies list, we talked about having an emotional connection to the building. You know, there's, we mentioned that the old high school looks like Rydell High from Grease. It's really kinda cute, but you can't bring it back from its near-death experience. Remembering what it's like to be a kid, remembering that kids only get one childhood, and they're our priority in this district. This bond puts safety first, it talks about secured doors, it talks about better security systems, and we all know what that means in this day and age. The advisory committee can have one-on-one conversations with communities, we have a lot of people in the committee that are very well-connected. The cool thing about, well, we'll get into that in a little bit, don't write off the no voters, we are one community. My attitude, and I think we talked about it on the committee, is you probably conceptually do have to write off some of the no voters, because they're just flat-out, they're not gonna vote for anything that, that cost them anything. So as they talk about the polling data in a little bit, it's really encouraging that it's so close with the data at this point, that even minor changes is gonna be really a pretty good recipe, we think, for success. And another strategy is that farm properties, they may have a special assessment for taxes. We didn't forget about that. We talked a lot about the farming community, the rural communities. And that's, that is a potential barrier, because, you know, I had some acreage listed a few years ago, with 100 acres, and the taxes on it were something like $200 a year, it was pretty small. So that is a barrier, it's a strategy that we have to adjust, or address.
So before we move on to next steps, I also wanna take the opportunity to thank our bond advisory committee. You got a little taste of the discussions we've been having over the past four months, and you had a committee of really engaged community members that weren't afraid to have tough discussions, and, and kind of fight it out in a very respectful way, and hear some different opinions. And I think just listening to what our representatives have said tonight, from, I mean, those were just kind of notes from verbatim discussions from the committee, but we really wrestled through a lot of stuff, and I think are proud to come out of this with a recommendation for you tonight. So Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
Before I go into next steps, I just wanted to ask our, our three board observers, what you, what you just heard, to me at least, being, being intimately involved in the process, and at every single one of the meetings, was very representative of the, the spirited conversations that we had. Do any of our three board observers wanna mention anything about their experience in the process?
I'll just, I'll just say one thing, and that is to reiterate that the conversations were very robust and vigorous. But at the end of them, there was much more in common among the participants than there were differences. And there were some sticky differences. But it was really notable that with a very diverse group, representing pretty much, I would say, almost every kind of different interest in the community, that at the end of the day, the priority of the kids, the priority of doing things properly, taking good care of our resources, being attentive to what community concerns would be, that was just throughout. So it was, it was a really, it was a great process, and I appreciate all the, all the, the committee members being willing to, to give their time, because those were, those were, you know, really intense meetings. And so I rem, I really appreciate those efforts. Thank you guys for representing it so well. That was, that was difficult to do, you, you really captured it, thank you.
Yeah, well, well said, Janet. I have a lot to say, but I would just really piggyback on that, I think you, you really nailed it, that's the way, way it happens. Thank you both, and thank everybody else.
I just wanted to say, thanks, there was a, a sticky point where, over the course of two meetings, one bond advisory committee member was like, you still haven't proved to me that replacement is better than, what was the word we used?
Modernization.
Modernization. And a lot of work was done in order to show what that would take. And it's really clear, I think, to me, that the modernization isn't good for our kids. And so even though it was a lot of work and a lot of time to go through that process, I think that the whole committee was, was really clear on the reason why that's not what we're recommending, or what's, what the bond advisory committee is recommending. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, board members, for being so, such active participants in the process as well. And just for me, as, as your public servant, and a servant of this community, it's just been an absolute privilege to be a part of this process. I am in awe at the amount of ownership that has been taken by the bond advisory committee. This truly is a problem so big, it can only be solved by the community. And that's one of the things that, it was so touching for me. being, being an outsider, coming to Silverton and going into my third year here. Uh, it's just a real privilege to continue to serve. I wanna walk through what phase two will look like. So what you just heard, up to this point, was the end of phase one. And that is the bond committee worked to get us to a draft recommendation. And so now we're going into the most difficult part of the, of this bond process, which is the community engagement piece. And so as you know, uh, from my board updates, my weekly board updates, that, that we're going into this phase, that we're bringing in a professional facilitator to help us with these sessions so that we can remain focused on the types of feedback that we're looking for to make this a bond that our community is willing to support. And there's a lot of different technical aspects and strategy that goes into this, to building a presentation that both informs the community and also solicits the right kind of feedback and honors all of the work that's been done. All, all told, if we get to November and if we get to June and the board feels confident taking action on this to place it on the ballot, this process will have lasted four years. Four years. That is a long time, four years and three superintendents. And so I think, uh, I just wanna mention that to put it in perspective. This has been a long journey and we're starting to enter into the second phase of, of getting to a critical point. So the planning for these meetings, we have ten of them scheduled. Ten, I, and I would have to, to honor Steve's comments too. We are grappling with what to call them. Do we call them bond feedback sessions, draft bond feedback sessions, discussions? We're working on that, but, but words matter. And, but I think you understand that these are at a whole different level than last year's listening sessions. And because they're at a whole new level, we need to bring in experts to be a part of the collaborative process to build the agendas for these meetings also. So we have already begun planning with Jerry Colonna, who's a known quantity. Uh, he's done, uh, lots of work here in Silver Falls for multiple superintendents. He's also, in my opinion, the most respected administrator in the state of Oregon. Um, and he's well-known by our, our rural communities as well because of the seven listening and learning sessions we did last year. But we're also bringing in Wenaha Group and most importantly, Jeremy Wright from Wright Public Affairs. This is where he really steps into the picture. So Wenaha got us to this point, to a draft recommendation. Now it turns to the messaging and getting feedback and trying to use this as a formative assessment to come up with a final recommendation that you can feel confident in, that truly, uh, has the community's voice attached to it. So Jeremy, who will be going over the polling data with you, will be a major part of our work going forward. You can expect, uh, to see his participation really ramping up, uh, as well. And so our goal is to, uh, from, uh, February eighth, that's the start of our, of our bond feedback sessions, if you will. Uh, we will end in mid-March. And then we will come back together for a fifth meeting of the bond advisory committee in late April. April seventeenth, I believe, is the week, April twentieth, the twentieth, which is the week of the seventeenth, to come back and finalize, uh, the bond recommendation and to bring it to you during a listening session in May. And then for you to take action at a regular board meeting in June. And you all know that, that whether or not we move forward with this bond is one hundred percent your call as a board. We are here, I am here to serve you and to make sure you have all the data and information that you need to, to confidently take action. With having said that, um, I'll take any questions that you have regarding the second phase. Anything at all or comments?
On the second phase or anything?
What's that?
On the second phase, comments or anything?
Anything, anything at this point.
I, I, I just wanna kinda come back to her, you know, to Hillary and to Dixon, just thank you both for being here and, um, honestly, you got me excited because, um, again, personally, I, you know, I'm, I'm in alignment with much of what you, you guys said. And Dixon, I'm really glad you, um, you and others championed the high school too because people, you know, it's the new building, right? It doesn't need any work, it's twenty-five years old, part of it, and the other one's fifteen, seventeen years old. It's like saying, well, I'm gonna buy a brand new car, Hillary, I'm never gonna put new tires on it. That's just not safe, that's not smart. Because if you don't put new tires on it, you're gonna wreck your rims, you're gonna wreck your, your whole alignment, you're gonna wreck your whole drivetrain and you're gonna need a new car. It's gonna cost you more. That little bit of, I'm not minimizing the amount of dollars that go into the high school, but the, the minimal amount of preventative maintenance of, what was it, four or five million, I think it was, for this high school is gonna save us tens of millions down the future if we don't do something now. So, um, uh, I, I appreciate you, you as champion for the high school too because we still need to put money into this business.
It's a real tiny part of the bond.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Less than four percent.
Well, and, and let's be honest.
It has to be our messaging.
And the awesome grant, okay? The awesome grant, if we can pass this by, the awesome grant pays for the upgrades to the high school. There's another little piece right there.
There was discussion about Silver Crest and fixing or replacing or whatever.
Seismic grant.
There's some grant money.
Yep.
If that comes through, then that money can be saved and applied elsewhere.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I, I, I just, I'm really appreciate the work you did and, and, um, you know, I really like talking about the what's in it for me. We really have to make sure our district understands that every child, student, you know, every school committee, uh, community is going to get something out of this bond and, and, and future generations too. And Scott has even brought up the point that our unborn students, right? Are gonna benefit from this. And, but we have to make sure that we're doing a good job in our communities of, of selling the, the whiffem, right? The what's in it for me. And, and, and that was something that, you know, I was on the long-range facility planning committee and that was a huge piece that came out of that. It was like, everybody has to feel like they're gonna get something out of this. So I'm really glad you guys reiterated that. And just the concept of, I think this can be a huge rallying point for our community, regardless of belief system, regardless of political ideology, regardless of whether you live outside the city limits or inside the city limits or where your kids go to school. I think the, the concept, these are all our kids, right? And we have to kind of say, use this as a rallying point to, this is our community, we have to do something better for our kids. And I love the stewardship comment because I see this as not, this isn't a tax burden, this is a stewardship investment.
Yes.
And, um, you know, we just, we just have to use this as a rallying piece for our district. And I, I think, I, I'm confident we can, I really am. So again, thank you to both of you and to our Wenaha Group too for the work you've done with the, the committee so far and it's still going. But, uh, excited to hear the, the comments tonight.
Thank you, Aaron.
Can I add one other thing? I think it's real paramount in messaging when we go out that we really press forward the notion that it is one district, it is one group of kids, they're all ours. And, um, that, you just said something that, that just really struck a chord with me about, um, you said something about the kids and the things, the things that have happened the last couple of years. You said a rallying, this is a rallying for the district and a rallying for the kids. What better time to rally for the kids than after the crap that we've been through for the last three years? What better time?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I got, um, I, uh, I got a comment and, um, and a question for, for you guys. Um, comment, if this could, the fact that we can put a sizable chunk of money to, to the rural buildings and in town will just, you, we can kind of put, it will really go a long ways just putting that thing to bed. That's, that's just a comment, I just, that's been the theme of my, watching this happen the whole time. And I'm just curious, have, um, on the second round of polling, you guys noticed any changes? Or is there kind of anything, anything different from round one to round two? Did it notice anything?
We certainly noticed some changes and, and will draw your attention to, to, uh, the focal points of that polling data. I think you'll find it really interesting, but nothing earth-shattering.
Okay.
But I think it will confirm a few things for you.
Okay, thanks.
One thing's for sure, there is a path forward and that's the most important thing.
Yeah.
Because the polling data certainly could've told us that you need to shut it down now uh, and come back to the drawing board. So, so it's very positive and Jeremy will walk us through that.
Well, I'll weigh in on a few things. The, um, I like the high school, right? So that's, I think that was a really important add, I'm glad you guys landed there. I think that's gonna be really important. I'll piggyback what Tom just said, I like the fact that it's, I'll just call it roughly equal uh, in terms of the amounts, I think that's gonna go a long ways. Not only is it equal, that just feels good, but it's also, I think, just what you said, that amount of money indicates a long-term plan for those buildings. And so that will go a long ways towards easing that, those concerns. So I, I guess I'm just agreeing with Tom on that point. My second comment has more to do, I suspect, with phase two. But one thing you didn't list anywhere as a barrier, but it's, in my circles, one of the most common things I hear, has to do more with the culture wars. People don't want to vote for buildings if they don't like what's being taught to their kids. And I think we have to make sure that somehow just stays out of this district to whatever extent is possible. Because I think if we are not careful, all it's gonna take is another mask mandate or whatever the thing is that divides everybody, and they're gonna say, hell no. And they're gonna do it for philosophical reasons that haven't got anything to do with the building. So that's more, I guess, to you, Scott, because, you know, sort of as the leader of, of the district. But we have to really, I think, as a district, pay attention to that. Ten percent of our kids left during COVID, we only got some of them back. I don't know how many of those families are gonna vote for a bond. But if we have more of these types of issues that pop up here and there, I just, I don't know how we overcome it. So my, I guess my recommendation as we move through into phase two is that we just be aware that that matters a lot. So I wanna see this thing pass and I think that's a critical component, at least in the people I know most and, and talk with about this. Because those are their concerns. The money, yeah, everybody doesn't like to pay taxes, but that's not their number one beef. I will tell you right now, that is not their number one beef.
And I hear, I hear things that are very congruent, uh, Jonathan, and, and speaking to folks all the time. Uh, one of the things I will say is, from the day I started, July one of two thousand twenty, every single thing that we've done adult action-wise has been driven towards a successful bond. And that includes the biggest part of our work as a district internally, which is our efforts to reform teaching and learning and to be extremely transparent about a standards-based instructional model. And, and, and by transparent, I mean, our curriculum is posted to the public. Our projection maps are on our district website. So if anybody has any questions about what is being taught in our schools, that is a conversation point that is very factual. And so we're making strides to be as transparent as, as we can. We're public servants and we're here to serve the community, not the other way around. And I just want you to know that that is, that is top of my list in terms of how I view the world until we reconcile the most, the most challenging issue regarding the school district, which is its facilities. Where will we put our kids? That's my question of the community, where? Where will we put them? Because the middle school will not stay up forever. And so we need to reconcile it now. If we don't, costs will get so prohibitive, a bond will never be passed. And then what? Owen, you had a comment.
Jonathan, since you brought it up, I, the issue that you brought up is one that I kind of have mentally personally categorized into a, a voter that thinks this way. If you don't do what I want you to do, I'm gonna vote no. You know, we even had some emails to that effect that said, if you don't, you know, if you take the masks off our kids, I'm gonna hurt our kids and vote no. That's the way I think about a lot of those, um, that we maybe just have to reframe the way we, we talk about it. And the way we think about the problem and maybe even the way we answer people's questions. You know, that say, you know, how can I, how can I trust you because people twenty-five years ago, you know, did something that I think was wrong? And so I'm gonna vote, or maybe I'm gonna vote no because I just don't have any trust. Those type of issues are, aren't ones that I can probably argue out of, but I can reframe it to be like, well, you're gonna hurt kids, fifth, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten-year-old kids today because of something that happened twenty-five years ago. If you start thinking about it that way, I mean, to me, that is kind of transformational on a lot of these. You know, if you don't support our teachers by giving them everything they ask for, I'm gonna vote no. There's so many of those kind of barriers that are out there.
Right.
And to me, I just think, I just changed the words to, well, if I don't support you there, I'm gonna hurt our kids. That's what it comes down to. If you're, if you're voting no, our kids are suffering. I mean, they don't have buildings that are adequate and a lot of them don't. And, and they're getting worse and, um, so I mean, the need is clear. And I just think, again, a lot of those barriers, if we reframe our way we're thinking about them, to that, I don't know, to me, that, that moved me, so for what it's worth.
I, I like the idea of reframing it though, and I think my point was primarily just to whatever extent we can keep it from, issues from bubbling up and becoming some new wedge issue, that was, I think, my main point. Because I think it matters because, as I said, money's an element. Trust is bigger by far. Whatever the, for whatever the reason, right, left, middle, it doesn't matter. But if you don't trust the district to take care of your kids, I'm not talking physically in a building, I'm talking take care of your kids, then you're not gonna vote for the bond. And that's my point. And, and so, but I agree, if, anytime we can reframe and anytime we can keep, stick to what we do best, which is teach the kids and keep the culture wars out to whatever extent is, that's my whole, that's all I'm trying to say.
I don't know if we can necessarily keep the culture wars out, only because, not, and I'm just not talking about the people here, but I'm also talking about, you know, the vehicles that feed that, right? And, and it's much larger than us. But, um, hate is taught. I don't think we inherently want to hate. And I think certain things are taught generationally. And so it goes back to how we've looked at this district in the past and, and some of the grudges that are held on and, and that is passed down to generations and whatnot. So there, it, it's going to take a real turn to start seeing things a little differently and start looking more at a horizon that benefits everybody, maybe, hopefully in my lifetime. But something that, for the sake of education, the students, everyone, that's a part of the district, that we are willing to support the bond so we can have something that withstands time because time doesn't stop, you know? So it, and we desperately need it in this district. I don't know though how we can always stop the culture wars other than not feed into it probably, like you're saying. But I don't know how we can do that. I, I mean, sometimes it slips in without us, we can't control it all, I guess.
Well, the good news is we only have to have fifty percent of the vote plus one.
Yeah, I know.
And our polling data was really promising and that was, um, in our, our meeting on Thursday, that's what led to this recommendation. It was kind of like the affirming of this recommendation because, like Scott said, there's a, there's a clear path and we don't have to have everybody agree. Only fifty percent plus one. Hi, Celeste, welcome.
Thank you, I'm so sorry I'm late. I took my youngest three to the zoo today and it was such a magical day that I completely forgot that it was Monday. My apologies, but I'm happy to be here.
We've certainly all been there, Celeste, and, and I'm so glad you were able to make it. Celeste, a couple of things that, that our other bond advisory committee members had shared was their, their experience in terms of how we came to the conclusion around a draft recommendation. And, and Celeste has been a very passionate member of our bond advisory committee. And would you like to share some thoughts? Just speak from the heart about your experience and the process, just so our board can, can?
Sure, I doubt that I'll say anything different than what's already been said.
You'll just say it better.
You have, what, thirty-three children, is it?
Thirty-four.
It's important to get your fingers in there.
Oh, I have six kids and, um, my oldest is a senior here. And, um, then my youngest are three-year-old twins. And so I have some coming, coming out. So I have some coming, coming out the gate pretty soon. And so I definitely have a deep appreciation for our school system as it is and also am highly invested in its future. I also have a son that's at the middle school right now. And there was a video that was made about the facilities there. And he was highlighted running in the rain from one path to another.
We didn't know that.
So that's going to go out on Facebook pretty soon in this process of advocating for, for this bond to pass. I've been really impressed. I've never experienced anything like this before. This is my first, but I've been very impressed with the way the meetings have been held, with the amount of detail that has gone into the research. I'm a historian. I, I got a degree in history and really deeply appreciate the details and the research aspect. And I know how much time that takes, so I really appreciate that. There's been an amazing amount of respectful and diverse dialogue amongst the group and spirited at times, and yet also remaining respectful. And people truly understanding where other people are coming from and it helping them to understand better. And also there have been questions, hard questions asked, that they have done a wonderful job coming back and having good answers for. So I really feel like I've appreciated being able to be a part of the whole process. And I'm definitely ready to actively move forward in advocating for this and doing everything that I can in our community to, to see it pass. And if that means setting up a political action committee or, or anything that I can do in that process, then I will do it as long as people can have patience with me not remembering which day it is.
A day, a day at the zoo with your kids is priceless. How, how many of those do you get?
I think something Celeste just said is really crucial moving forward. And what was so cool about this advisory committee is it was very representative of the community. Jonathan, I get exactly what you're saying. That is an issue. We kind of separated that thought from the fact that this is a facilities thing. That's another thing that needs to be addressed. But what I think is really important, it was such a representative group. And when we all at the end said, can you support it? And then we had a three, four, five. Five is enthusiastic support. And three was, eh, it's not perfect, but I can support it. We pretty much all agreed, support means going out and advocating for it, not just saying, oh, yeah, and not doing anything about it. But as Celeste said, going forward, advocating for it. Everybody there was ready to go out and even those that said, this isn't perfect, but I can live with it and I'll support it and I'll work for it. I think that's an important message.
Can I say one last thing?
Yeah.
Because it just came to me. And it, and one refrain I hear from certain folks in the community is, you know, well, you know, we have this shotgun approach to, to school buildings. We have all these little buildings. We don't need all of these little buildings. We don't need all of these little schools. And my counter to that now, and I am a convert, is I don't, where are those kids going to go? There is nowhere else. We need every classroom that we have, no matter what school it is at. We are at, as far as I know, maximum capacity in most of our school buildings. So it's not a question anymore of like, oh, you know, close these schools down to save money. That's a scarcity mindset. We are a wealthy community, and by that I mean, we have a wealth of human resources, of people, of brains. We should not be scrabbling about the place where we send our babies every day. That should be something we are happy to spend money on as long as it's being spent on the most important things. And I, I really do believe that what we've come up with are the most important things.
Thank you, Hillary. So we're going to shift gears here and bring in Jeremy Wright. He's attending virtually and he's going to run through a very similar presentation in terms of structure that you received after the first round of polling. This one's a lot different. The questions were different. It was designed differently because now we have price points and other things that we could, we could touch on. So Jeremy, thank you so much for, for being here, and I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Let me see if I can start. I need to be able to share my screen and be given the power. There we go. Right in me. Can everyone see my screen and hear me? Excellent. Great. So as was just outlined, that, you know, we did, this poll is very different from what we did for you in the fall. In the fall, the poll we did was a state-of-the- district poll. So it was more touching on kind of the, the community's perceptions of your school district and less on the facilities and, you know, the bond development. And we did that because we wanted to make sure and understand how your community saw your, sees your district, and if there were any potential issues we, that would be better to be addressed now rather than later in the fall, rather than later. As some, some folks in the discussion have talked about with the hot button, social issues. So this poll was all about giving the Bond Development Committee tools to finalize and refine their bond recommendation that you, you've seen tonight. So to quickly go over what we did, we made, we did a sample of 400 likely voters. Again, we called them using, so, you know, you call them both cells, so cells and landlines. And we conducted those interviews earlier here in January, January 10th to 13th. Just wanted to remind everyone, there's a margin of error here. So when you see small number differences, just remember there's about, you know, almost 5%, 4.9% margin, margin of error. So some of these small subgroup things will, aren't necessarily statistically significant. We diminished the voter file sample to reflect a November 2023 electorate. And what does that mean? The poll we did in the, in fall, we actually called everyone who is a voter in the, registered voter in the Silverfall School District. Not everyone, but our, our universe of people we were dialing to get to that 400 sample was all likely voter, voters, registered voters in the Silverfall School District. What we did this time, though, is we really wanted to narrow down that info for you. And so we diminished the electorate to reflect what a November 2023 group of voters looks like. And that group of voters is different from all your registered voters because, you know, you're looking at a much smaller turnout when you're talking about a November 2023 election versus all registered voters. So we just pulled this demographic slide for you, so you could see the difference. So you have a district where about half of all voters are under age 50 and the other half are over 50. You have a district where about 53% of voters are in the city of Silverton and 47% everywhere else. You see the, the registration, 27% Dems, 38% non-affiliated, and 35% Republicans. But in the right column here is like, what is a November 2023 electorate?
Hey, Jeremy.
Yeah.
I don't think we're looking at the slide you're talking.
What slide are you seeing right now?
Perceptions of school facilities lean negative is on the, the header.
Oh, that's really weird. Let me, I apologize. Is that, this is the, hold on for a sec.
Are you presenting on another monitor?
Yeah, could be that. Hold on. Let me try again. I apologize to everyone.
I was wondering too. Thank you, John.
Yeah, you were like, Jeremy, what are you talking about? I apologize. Now, do you see the methodology on your screen now?
Yep.
Yep, okay, sorry about that.
Are you, are you able to put it in presentation mode so it's a little bit bigger for us?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Trying to. There you go. Is that a little bigger for y'all?
That's great.
Okay, thank you. Apologize. You think three years into this, we would have it all dialed in. So I just walked through this verbally, what this slide. This slide is what I was just walking through verbally about your demographics. And so on the left is your registered voter, so everyone in your district. And the right is likely November 23 voters. You can see the difference. And likely November 2023 voters are people who vote like over every election. It's going to be about 25% of your electorate. And so, you know, we can expect a turnout around 25, 30%. So you see it's more women than men. You'll see it's a much older group of voters than, and I, I call, I'm paying attention to this specifically because it's important to understand when we go out into the community and talk about this and think about how you are going to pass this, that you understand that who we're talking to is different from all, your entire community in terms of how to win this. So we have an older electorate. It's a little more, it's, it's 50/50 balance between City of Silverton and the rest of the district. Non-affiliated voters are a much smaller part of it, and this is really common. People who tend to be in parties are much more electorally active. And so you'll see here that non-affiliated voters, why they're the largest single group. Those are also called independents globally, a large, largest single group in your entire district. They actually are, in a November election, only going to be about 20%. So we, the numbers you see tonight are going to be reflected in this right-hand column. Those are the people, the demographics that we, we talked to. So where do we start? What we wanted to do out of the gate was actually ask a, a mocked-up version of your ballot language. And ballot language is important because this is exactly what people, or a version of what people will see. And you only get 10 words for the caption and 20 words for the question. So on the right here, you see what we asked. Bonds to increase safety, repair schools, replace Silverton Middle School. That's your 10-word cap, caption. And your question was, shall district increase safety, repair all schools, replace middle school, issue $138 million in general obligation bonds audits required? Having heard this, would you vote yes or no? And what you see is that, you know, we start out with a 43 to 33 plurality of support, but you have a whole chunk of people who don't know. And so if throughout this presentation, you'll see a lighter color blue and a lighter color pink and a dark, and that's intensity of support. And so, you know, you have a lot of, it's lightly held views in general. We have a big chunk that don't know, a quarter of people don't know. And then, you know, even though, you know, you have more supporters on yes than no, that's also lightly held. So there's a whole bunch of opinion here that isn't something that's dead set out of the gate. They haven't heard a whole lot about this, and this is the first time they've probably been asked about it. And so, you know, it's not unusual to see this level, don't know or light support. Going to the next one. And who are these people? We do much, and this is the, on the right, far right column here is the margin of support for these various demographics. We do much better with, out of the gate with women. Younger voters are far more supportive than older. College-educated voters are far more supportive than non-college education. Renters typically have been, are always stronger supporters because they don't see their property tax bill and understand that connection. So those are, you know, in, in terms of party affiliation, we do much better with Democrats, non-affiliateds, Republicans, very much underwater in the initial ask. You do better in the city of Silverton proper versus outside. And current school districts, parents are incredibly supportive, not surprising. And, but we still want to see that number to get even higher. We want to move to 16% all the way up because we know that they are some of our key targets. And people who've never had a kid in school are less supportive out of the gate of this $138 million bond. None of these numbers are really that different from what we see in a lot of places. It's kind of typical patterns, except of course, your regional is very unique to your district. And then what we did is, and I'm not going to read all this, but what we did was we gave them an in-English explanation, the elevator pitch. So we had kind of the tortured bond ballot language that we have to, that will, people, every voter will see on their ballot. And what this is, is gives you the, you know, what exactly are they buying? And it's all about critical needs and what's happening, you know, with the, you know, leaky basements and roofs and, and safety and security and replacements over to middle school. Very importantly in this, we also, you see at the end, tell them the cost per thousand. So this is the first time we say, okay, this is the, what it's going to cost you, $1.53 per thousand. And you'll see here is the difference. This is where we pick up significant opposition. So you're, you pick up about three points in support, but 10, 10% is points in opposition. And later on in the poll, we go through a whole list, and I'll show you, of the actual items that we talk about in that, that English, English explanation before. And people really like all the items you're doing. The struggle is going to be that they don't want to pay for them. This is again, not a doubt unusual of occurrence. But this is, you know, this is where, you know, we have to, we're going to have to really make the case. It's telling me that you're going to have to really make the case around cost and price sensitivity with such a large jump as soon as we give them the price for a thousand. So from there, what we wanted to do is test for the Bond Development Committee actual price point sensitivity and then the, the items that you're considering putting into bond. We tested 138 million, and what we said here is that this is going to do, make critical repairs at every school in the district, increase student-staff safety, replace all buildings, that's over to the middle school, with exception of the gym. This bond is estimated to cost $1.53. And then we said 110 million, which is a smaller bond. This would fund the replacement of all, all the buildings at Silverton Middle School, with exception of the gym. However, some, and then go through some of the top priority repairs. However, some improvements planned in the larger bond we just discussed would not include, occur like stormwater damage and plumbing upgrades, replacement of energy-efficient windows, et cetera. This bond is estimated to cost property owners additional 88 cents. And finally, we did the smallest bond, which would just do the middle school with the, only the highest priority, top priority repairs in, in security needs across the district. And that would cost them 68 cents per thousand. And what we found is that we didn't pick up any, much support, the cheaper we got. You'll see here on the left that, you know, the 138 had about 44%. Had 44% support, and then we have 41 and 43, nothing statistically significant. And then we, our opposition remained about the same. The one thing I want to point out here, though, is that there is definitely the lowest price point had the much higher no-not strongly than the highest price point. The highest price point engendered more strong no. 29% of people were no strongly. So like stronger opposition to the larger number. What I told the Bond Development Group, though, is that I think at the end of the day, the probability of picking up a good chunk of this 46%, whether it's 138 or 101, is very low. That this campaign is going to be won around that 10% to 12% of undecideds, and we see that later in the poll. We're not moving, you're going to have about 45, 46% of your community at the end of the day or just not, do not want to increase their taxes. And that's going to be, you know, it's going to be a pretty marginal number, what this tells me, of voters who are going to need to move. I think you can move a few of these no-not strongly's, but it's going to be pretty limited. And so there, you don't really get much from lowering your bond amount. We typically would recommend the smaller number if it showed a greater increase in support. All it did was bring increase in less vehement opposition, I guess, is a way to put it. Which isn't really, for, you know, kind of thinking about how you put together a bond and bond campaign, doesn't give you a lot. And so that's why, you know, the, the Bond Advisory Committee went forward with the 138. And, and you know, that's always not, that's not always the case. I want to make it clear. There's times where people pick up dramatic amount of support when you drop it by half, right? You went from a buck 53 to 68 cents. This surprised us because in some places, you drop that by half, people move and you, you pick up significant support. In this case, that wasn't the case. And then what we did was test the actual. And then what we did was test the actual items, and then there was a whole battery of questions around um, these things you're considering placing in the bond. And, you know, what I want to emphasize is that your voters want warm, safe, and dry things done for the kids. And so whether it's that uh, safety, getting rid of asbestos, and some of those talking about black mold, um, basic repairs uh, to your plumbing, your roofs, fire safety, um, meeting, making accessibility for ADA requirements, very positive. All these items, we tested it on a real top-tier things, which is uh, fix the buildings, make them warm, safe, dry, secure. I actually say secure and safe and secure as well. Those are the things that people really wanted to, uh, you to do. And your second tier items aren't bad at all. This isn't like, just as we say, second tier, it doesn't mean don't include them because they all have very high net favorability ratings, but they're more the safety and security. We just talked about addressing size and the structural changes at Silver Crest. Um, you see down here, replacing Silverton Middle School. Uh, that wasn't incredibly, uh, that wasn't as popular as some of the other items we tested. It is important to note, though, and I want to emphasize this for all the board members. When we talk about replacing Silverton Middle School, you have to couple it with talking about the issues. So talk about the specific things we are improving or replacing there, not to say we're replacing the middle school. That doesn't mean anything to people. So you have to talk about why you're replacing the middle school. And it's the fact that we have condemned building there. We have placed spaces that kids can't go. We have water intrusion. We have, you know, classrooms that are 100 degrees in the summer and can't, you know, be locked. Whatever, all the different ways you can point out the problems are, it's absolutely crucial. Don't just say you play Silverton Middle School. Uh, and then finally, the two things that were not particularly popular, it doesn't mean that they're fatal, they're gonna like tank your bond. Um, but that with adding covered players to every school and adding a gym. So people just didn't see this as the higher priority. They really wanted you to take care of the basics first. And if maybe you could get to this, um, that would be nice. But these, these are not um, things that I think there's kind of a, you know, kids can play in the rain kind of mentality there. And then the final thing we did was uh, asked a final question. Now that you've heard, we've had, we've talked to you for 12, 13 minutes, uh, having heard more about this, here's how much it's gonna cost, what you support, and you see the movement and we get to 50%. So the comment about there's a path? There is. Uh, it's gonna be a, uh, you know, a tight, tough, narrow one. I won't sugarcoat it for you, but I think you know that with your community, that we're gonna have to really make the case um, around, you know, why should we tax us a significant tax um, to improve your schools? Uh, I think you see here that talking about the problems at each school, really detailing out how you're gonna make those improvements, detailing how we're doing the basics, not the fancy stuff. Um, and taking care of our buildings uh, for future kids coming through is gonna be the, your, your path in in terms of messaging. And we're, we're gonna continue to emphasize that. I'll stop there. That's the end of presentation.
Questions for Jeremy?
So you mentioned a 4.9% margin of error. In your experience, how closely do these sort of early numbers tend to trend with sort of reality? In other words, I mean, 43 and 50 sound really promising. But I think if each could be off by 5%, you could swap the two technically, right? So
Yep.
My question is, how, in your experience, does it tend to trend pretty close to these early polls?
Um, I think it's, these early polls are more about giving you a sense of kind of the overall um, feel of the community. I would pay more attention to the price point sensitivity stuff, the uh, the um, project uh, prioritization stuff that we did there. Um, these are, I, I like to pay, polls are snapshot in time, time. So I'm more interested probably in the final one we do for you before you go do the ballot, right? Um, that's a little closer to the election day. But to answer your question, if, you know, we're sitting at these similar numbers in our last poll for you in August or whatever we choose to do it before the filing deadline, you know, they hear you, you pretty close. Um, the one thing I will say is that we typically see undecideds late break, probably three to one towards a no vote. Um, so don't anticipate like sharing this undecided. You're gonna lose more undecideds and win. Um, but typically, it's not, it's not off by four or five. It's typically off by one, two, or three percent. Uh, but these are really early numbers. We haven't done anything in the community. Um, you just had somebody captured on the phone for 12 to 13 minutes, so that part's a little unrealistic in terms of modeling. But we also have done no education. So uh, I would be, I'm super interested to see where we go uh, in, in. But at the end of the day, I think your community is gonna be a 52, 48 victory. That would be a betting man.
Any other questions? I'm just wondering, are we gonna poll, or are we gonna poll between the end of the feedback sessions in March and our board decision in June?
Uh, so there was one final poll planned, and that's a messaging and snapshot poll, right? That gives us where we test more messaging, thus this project priorities. Uh, we, I, we could, we could poll in June before you make your decision. Um, or we could wait, you're, you're, the board to action is one thing. And then the district, uh, the district has to technically file by August, I believe, 15. Um, and that is like the filing deadline. So you could wait, do a motion, and then choose to poll in early August um, before the actual paperwork has to be turned into your county elections uh, to place on the ballot. It's really up to the district, up to the board. Are you comfortable? Do you want to poll before you take a public board vote? Or would you, you find taking an action, understanding that you could poll a little, little closer to the election, but before the filing deadline um, to get a, that, I just like to be as close to the election day as possible because it's as close to the, the, the conditions um, that will be uh, voting under.
Okay.
That makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks.
And we're at your service. If the board believes that uh, you'd like to get uh, some more data before uh, June, then we can talk about that, too. Um, again, we're relying on Jer- Jeremy and his expertise to know uh, when exactly to poll and how that data will be the most useful for you.
Yeah.
Other questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, Scott, I just wanted to mention, um, forgive me if you mentioned it, Jeremy, but we have about 13,000 registered voters in the district, and he mentioned that an odd year election obviously would be a lesser turnout. So they'd expect about a 30% turnout, which would be 4,000 voters and approximately 1,200 of those that would be Silver, Silver Falls parents.
Yeah.
What does that break down to, each 1%?
We're gonna need about 40, 40 votes for each 1%, 1%, 40 votes in an election like that.
And this will be one on the margins. So that, that uh, may sound, you know, uh, outlandish, but it's, you know, pretty real. We need to be thinking about it in that, in those terms.
Yeah, and in district year size, you know, we can really engage in what, you know, that retail politics. And you guys, this board notes us from running for office. You have a lot, you know, one-on-one conversations and have a lot of, what I love, two-way conversations instead of just pushing material out into the universe. You use the material to have um, conversation, you know, have, you know, answer people's questions, and you can do that. Um, it's a lot of hard work, but it's gonna be what we need to do.
And Jeremy will have a lot of, Jeremy will have a lot of advice going forward about how we approach it.
Yeah, and I'll just say that what, you know, that we, I heard the discussion about the listening sessions. And I think the whole goal here is to give the community, the larger community, opportunity to give us feedback as well. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna change your, what this hard work that's been done today. But it does, it's just another, like, this polling is a quantitative uh, point of, uh, it's, you know, you know, quantitative uh, data point. But you need qualitative as well, to be this kind of taking the time to do the feedback. And um, even if, you know, I always say, you know, make sure you ask people for their opinion before you ask for their money. Um, and I think that's the whole goal. Um, and to give people real detailed information about what you're proposing. There might be some things in there you didn't consider, or there might be a messaging point that could be helpful. Um, all of these things are, you know, I I commend the district for taking the time, do what you're about to embark on in the next couple of months. Um, just because it's a, it's an important step um, that gives you uh, it, uh, cover and understanding of people's opinions on this issue in more depth than, you know, just going through the ballot, so.
Any other questions?
Sharing there.
Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Anything else from, from our friends at Wenahaw? Thank you to our, our bond advisory committee members again, taking time out of their day, not only for all four of the meetings, and we have a fifth one coming up in the spring, but also spending their Monday evening with us as well to share their thoughts. This truly is, this truly is their decision.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, we are moving towards our executive session. So now we're gonna move, after the, the room clears, we're gonna move into executive session under ORS 192 dot 6602D to con- conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations and ORS 192 dot 6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, a sick leave bank request. Are we all good to go straight into executive session? Okay. We are now um, opening back up into regular session to consider a sick leave bank request. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move that the board approve a sick leave bank of 20 days for Laetitia PD.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve a sick leave bank request for Laetitia Pet PD. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, without objection, meeting adjourned.